Where do you put all the excise taxes? Where do you put, you know, certain pieces of the revenues that we do gather? And the non-property tax revenues now total nearly $8 million annually. So, it's a lot of money. And how you spread that out over our budget is, you know, you know, it's really, there's really no magic to it. But, for instance, like, the Valhalla budget and the recreation budget, those are all the easy ones. All their, all the monies they raise go to those line items related to those budgets. Police and public works, oftentimes excise tax is attributed to, toward those departments for enforcement of, of, of the traffic on the roads, as well as for maintenance. So, you know, planning, you could look at, you know, a whole host of different things, from impact fees to permits and other things. So, you know, we tried to do our best, and hope you had a chance to look at that. But, you know, in the end, we, we failed to appropriate about $848,000 that, that we just left as, if you want to add that to any of the budgets, go for it. But, you know, in the end, we have essentially about, just under $14.7 million of expenses. We, we net out about $8 million of non-property tax revenues. Those are all other revenues, not property tax revenues, to basically come up with about $6.7 million annually that goes, that is part of the public charge, that goes out onto the tax bills themselves. So, I think we're doing a very good job. I, I really believe that if you looked at what we got initially for budgets, on the expense size, they were closer to 16 million. We basically denied just about every request for additional personnel at this time. We've got a lot on the horizon. We just have a lot of uncertainties that I don't feel, the council feels, ready to explore any kind of expansion until we know some of those things get settled. And I think, I think I've put together what I believe is a responsible budget for you. The SAD came in at about 1.8 million additional over last year. I was hopeful that that would change. Unfortunately, the cost of their insurance came back higher, not lower than Scott had predicted, and that kind of drove some of the reasons as to why we didn't see any change there.
Bill, I think their operating budget came in close to 3 million over.
Well, this is the cost to us.
Okay.
Their, their increase year over year to us was, let's see, should be...
It's almost two, isn't it?
I wonder why that column isn't showing up.
Don't plug it up right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go to the top one. Here you go. I'm sorry. Thank, thank you, Katie. You'll see here, year over year, 1.79 or just under 8% increase year over year. That was a little bit unexpected. That was an early number that almost didn't change. And I think Scott was expecting it to be down several hundred thousand more, but his insurance came up higher than, his, his insurance increases were over 8%. Ours this year were 2%. So, we did fairly well on our insurances, and they didn't do as well. The county, the biggest cost increase there is the, you know, the, the cost we have to do for the fiscal year financing, I call it. You've got three more years to pay that half a million dollars when they transition from a calendar year to a fiscal year. So, that'll be, you know, that'll be a windfall in year, you know, after year five. But, you know, that, so that's, that shows it up eight and a half percent. But when we look at the increase year over year, it, well, it is an increase, because last year's number also included that number. And, and then the TIF also went up nearly 300,000, and that was because of added value to the TIF districts, and that, that has to be raised as well. So, in the end, we're looking at about, at least for the town side, about a 4.2% increase in expenses over revenues, or just over, just under $270,000 increase year over year. Then going down through the SAD at 1.8, county at 100,000, TIF districts about 300,000, and the total increase to the mill rate is almost 2.2 million, or a 7.4, a 7.3% increase year over year. So, for us, when we, when we put that all together for you, I, I think we will be asking department heads to, you know, work pretty tight to the vest, especially if, if we are successful with the school project this summer. If the voters approve that, then I think, well, that's their choice, and we just have to prepare for it. And I don't believe you're going to be in a position to do a lot of capital projects outside of the TIF districts. And I think we've known that for a while. So, that shouldn't be a surprise, but I would just caution you that it will be difficult to do much outside of the TIF districts.
When I say the school budget gets approved in June, when will we start seeing the financial impacts of that, of that project?
FY '26, so a year from now. Not, not this, not this budget year, but at the next budget year.
It would be, okay.
That's when the debt will come back on.
They're still working on it.
Right. But it's most likely, if it's passed, we'll see our first debt payment in FY '26.
And that would be, we wouldn't see the first payment until the first tax bill in FY '26? So, November?
September.
September.
Yep. So, September, FY '26 is September of '25, so two year, a year from now, potential, a year from September.
Right?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, September of '26, if it passes in June, would be the first incurred mill rate adjustment for the school?
Right. And the tricky thing is, it'll, it'll line up directly with the revaluation, which, in today's terms, that impact now is somewhere around 35 or 36 cents per year on the mill rate. So, that, reducing that from the 85 million we saw a year ago or so, down to, what is it, the $55 million project-ish, they're all millions. So, I, I think when we did the math for Scott, both Diane and I, both of us were very close to the same number, about somewhere between 36 and 38 cents the first couple of years. Now, that's at the current rate, so, depending on...
They're trying to stretch it out, too. From what I hear from Leanne and people, they're, they're meeting with their bond people, trying to stretch it from 20 to 30 maybe, and seeing if they can maybe get a better rate, but looking at what the cost over time is to borrow that money.
That, that's very true. They are trying to look at a 30-year bond, bond note, not a 20, and that would be spreading it out, bringing the impact down.
But it might not be responsible over time to do that, because then you're paying more to borrow, to use the money for that.
Right, right. So, I, I think that's still a, a work in progress, but the numbers we were asked to provide were, were based on numbers that would show the debt service coming on over a four-year period, and each one of the four-year periods would be somewhere around 38 cents each year for new debt service. So, it'd be 38 cents each, each, each of the, each year for four years, just for debt service.
Okay. Okay.
Any immediate questions?
Bill, we're still collecting impact fees, correct?
Yes, we are.
And David Chase's project will incur impact fees?
Absolutely.
That's what I thought. I was asked that, and I said, absolutely, as far as I know. And somebody said, well, I don't think so. And I said, I'm pretty sure it does, so...
I don't know why it wouldn't. The only one thing I would look at is, you have a provision for affordable housing in there. Those units might be exempt, or senior housing units would be exempt. But I'd, I'd have to recheck on the affordable, affordable housing piece of it, so, because at one time, we did change that surely a few years ago. The, the impact fees got adjusted. We lowered the fee, and then, I know seniors still exempt, but I'd have to look for affordable housing, I still think is exempt.
Sorry, this is a little... A certain number, up to a certain number of units, not all of them.
Okay. I'll have to check that.
Seven, maybe?
Yeah.
It was written in, not as affordable housing, but as Habitat.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's the thing that changed. It changed to Habitat for Humanity-type houses.
Or other affordable housing.
By a public housing entity, like, like a Westbrook Housing. So, this wouldn't be eligible.
But I think there's a limit, like, seven units or something like that.
I don't think these would be eligible.
I was reading it recently. I don't know why.
Well, it's good, because that's exactly right, and I don't think these would be eligible for an exemption.
I think we got a question.
Yep.
Sorry, just backtracking to the school, and I should know the answer to this, but as far as the widening of Main Street, is that, that's included in their budget?
That is correct.
But you're kind of consult, you're kind of working with them through, I mean, we've talked a little bit about, you were able to kind of shave it down a little bit, and so, that can some kind, kind of have impact on possibly lowering the cost? Or I, I was just thinking more, we do paving all the time, right?
Right.
And so, you're able to probably accurately project for what things are going to cost? Not that they can't. I was just curious as to whether or not there's that back and forth for accurate forecasting sake.
Yes, there is. Chris and I have met with their engineers on a couple occasions now. We have asked and essentially worked with them to show them how we can make this better. The DOT has not required what I thought they were going to require. They've required no, I, I was expecting them to require a center turning lane, which is not a good thing. What they allowed for is a widening of the shoulder in those entrances on Main Street, and essentially nothing really on Tuttle Road. What we would, what we would disagree with is that we should probably do something by the superintendent's entrance there, as well as by the middle school entrance. If we could widen the lanes that are turning left, so you could get a little bit of a slip lane by, similar to what Main Street is, it's a, basically a 10-foot shoulder, I, I think that would be very helpful for traffic in the morning. So, those are the two things where we'll be looking at when they come back with those final plans. But they're going to get through the election first, and if they get, if they get approval for the project, that's when we'll start to see the details, just like you're describing. Chris is on top of that with them. He and I have met with them on several occasions, so I don't foresee any issues there.
And then, if, could I just follow one last thing? If we were to, so, so if that widening is to happen, the dialogue with Thea Butters, that comes through us, or that comes through the SAD?
That comes through the SAD.
Okay.
They still can come to you, and I would encourage them to come meet with Chris, and I would come so that, you know, Chris can, you know, carry the water for them, because it's a lot easier. They, they're not going to understand the concerns. At our neighborhood meeting the other night, a couple of people asked me, when, when do I get a chance to talk? And I said, I would bring my concerns today, right to the SAD, and say, could somebody stop by my house and just kind of walk me, walk me along the path here? Because they have it, they have it at the, we'll call it, the 50% plan level. We really need to get to 75 and 80 to see what those real impacts are going to look like.
Thanks.
They've budgeted 1.8 million for the improvements for Tuttle and Main.
This is a little bit off-topic, but I would encourage the school to take any reductions on their side of the road, instead of the other side of the road. Because I, if you want to get that slip lane crowded to the school side, and not the Butters' side, it seems like the, the Butters are always taking out a chin on every project.
I, I don't disagree with that, Bob, but to do that, we would have to reconstruct the whole road, you know, because you're, you're pushing over the center line when you do that, and that gets a little bit expensive. We've done it. We've created curves in roads that didn't have curves before, so it is possible, and Chris and I did share that with him, because we believe that we're pretty close to the limits of what we can do on the, the non-school side, we'll call it. I think we're pretty tight when we put the drainage in, and the last time, I think you remember when Story Brothers rebuilt that whole sidewalk through there, we've got catch basins that are in the lawn area. They're there because the water line, it was, we couldn't get them any closer because of the water mains that are in the road there. So, it is a little tricky. So, it may be the only option, to slide them over.
Quick question?
Sure.
So, I wasn't here, I was up, last meeting, I was up with the rest of the Moonbats up in Jackman, watching the eclipse. We had a, a presentation by the fire department from four positions. I'm just wondering what the council's position was on that, because I missed, I missed the discussion on it. If I could, you guys want to chime, just?
So, Bill, you can summarize, but I thought that they had requested, at some point, we will need to fill four positions. But did they request two, and we've said no? Because, again, that's one of the lines that I don't...
There are, there are no new positions in this budget.
There are no new positions in this budget.
Right. I was just wondering what your, yeah, what the philosophy was, why?
The big picture is, we started a conversation with Falmouth last Friday with two of their council members. Bill and the town manager from Falmouth are drafting a letter of understanding, if you will, for lack of a better term, so that the, the managers, the councils will sit down and take a, a large look, and look at assets, look at management, look at training, look at all those things that, but, so, the short answer is, nothing's going to get done today or tomorrow. The, the longer answer is that there is finally a conversation about collaboration and, so...
Do you think they had a serious look at, they're taking a serious look at it, Bob, or you think this is North Yarmouth again?
No, no, this is Falmouth. This is...
No, no, but you know what I'm saying about, you and I have been to the rodeo with North Yarmouth.
Right, right. And, and we've pretty much abandoned that.
Right.
And the conversation I had the other day was enthusiastic response from Falmouth to, to finally have the conversation, to examine it and, and see where it goes from there. I, I've got high hopes for it.
I was speaking with someone from North Yarmouth Finance Committee, and the fire department budget is probably more than half of their, their town budget. And I know, at least on the finance committee, there's some interest in talking about it, but I'm not sure about on the select board.
I was just going to say, I think, Mike, probably what you're getting at is, I, and where I think I expressed my initial concern when we talked about this, is, I think not addressing it is not responsible. I agree, conversations need to be had, but I do think not doing anything is also not in the best interest of the town. I recognize that it's a high cost. However, when it comes to safety, I don't think we can put a price on it. So, I don't know. Is that kind of what you're getting at, Mike?
I think it's exactly what I'm getting at.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I, nobody's as tight with a dollar than probably I am, but I just, I thought they made a good presentation. I thought, if we at least knock down a couple of positions this year, maybe a couple more next year, or one, two, one and one, it did something.
Yeah.
To, but, I think the safety, I'm, I'm already worried about the call that comes in, and then we don't have people for the second call, or we have a delay. That's, that's where I'm at.
I, ooh, echo that same concern.
I think that one thing that Bill has kind of mentioned to us, or over, over time, is this is a statewide problem, right? And so, what we're currently doing, it's kind of like the root cause analysis, right? The reality is that we don't have enough people within the state, right? And so, and what we're doing now is just kind of stealing from each other, right? So, I think that...
Oh, fair point.
The, the, the part about, that I'm excited about, about these conversations, is that part about shared services. So, rather than stealing from our neighbors, how can we actually work together? And if we start there, what else can we start to work together on? Doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be successful, because it sounds like we have been burned in the past, but let's at least, for me, kind of have those initial dialogues. And if they don't go anywhere, then we can start to plan for that. But I think that it is important to, to kind of work as hard as we can to make those types of partnerships successful.
You know, Tig and I live in a world, work-wise, where, yeah, everybody's stealing from everybody's police department, they steal from there, they go in there, they go, and they're following the dollar, most of the time, but they're also following good working conditions. But the bottom line is, you're shorthanded, and I just worry that, I, I'm worried about the people, we don't, we're, we're going to be late getting there, and we're not going to save. And, and I got to echo what Billy said about public safety, and safety of our communities has got to be priority number one.
I think the point that the presentation made that stands out to me is, Falmouth has 10 people on call, on duty all the time. We have two. So, I think these conversations, I applaud them, but it doesn't hold as much water when we worry about stealing from one another, when, if we don't have the position even available for maybe one of those 10 people from Falmouth to come, because then they'd still have nine people. You know what I'm saying? 10's a lot.
Well, remember how to count two, because every position represented four people behind it. So, we're at two, even though we have eight paramedics.
Right.
So, it takes, to fill, to fill two paramedics around the clock, it takes eight people. We're, they're at, they're at, they have 40 people that are working for them full-time. We have 10. We have less than 10. So, we have to get to a number that can fully staff a crew, which at a minimum is five, and we just don't have that now. And it'll be a while. But if we don't start in the near future, when you do have the ability, some of your TIF districts allow for, for, for paramedics, and we're already funding those through the, the TIF budget, but you, at some time, you're going to have to pay for them out of the general fund, and this, to me, $100,000 apiece every time you add another person between, you know, training, overtime, and, and salaries, and right now, every $150,000 we add to the budget is another 10 cents on the mill rate. So, that's where we came back to, and I think everybody kind of looked and said, where are we going to get the money from right now? Our, our levels aren't any different than when Chris was running the rescue. I mean, we had a very successful paramedic program then, when all the towns were working together. But Chris had a corral of paramedics that are no longer available, because now they're working full-time for other agencies. And while that program was very successful at the time, when everybody started doing their own thing, is, you know, we got to get back to consolidation of services that kind of more models that program than what we're all trying to do today, because there's just not enough bodies.
As part of your MOU or discussions with them, are we discussing that 10 to 2 ratio and the fact that, because I remember something in the presentation of them saying, effectively, you're too small for us to even effectively collaborate together.
Right.
So, are they raising that as part of the MOU discussion as well?
Well, that, that's going to be looking at a, an analysis of both towns, and what we should have for staffing level together. Together, we should look at, how do we help each other? Because we can't help them.
Yeah.
They can help us, but we can't help them.
Right.
So, they're going to want something in return. And if we can staff that second ambulance, and maybe it's during certain periods of time, or certain days, or weekends, or whatever it is, maybe that's incrementally a way we can get there, but it's not going to be that, it's not going to be that specific in the MOU.
Bill?
Just, what kind of runway, and Bob, I don't know if it's a question for you or Bill, but it's like, what kind of, I'm just thinking about, like, you know, looking ahead, right? FY '26, '25, '27 are going to be strapped, right? We're not going to have really any pliability for any financial increases, any extras, none of it. So, my concern is, what is the runway right now to get something like that off the ground? Like, are we looking realistically, like, next year is something we could, you know, feasibly say, this is going to happen? I just don't want it to get to next year, and then we aren't in some sort of, like, formal scenario? Is that a you question?
No, that's a really good question, because it is a runway question. And then, this is one of the things I've coached the, the chief and the, the deputy chief on, in that if you're offered a position, don't fund it until January.
Yeah.
So that you get two, that coming out of the gate, you get two, and the following year, there's a commitment to do with two more, another two. So that, you know, over time, and, you know, we are kind of arriving at that door, we're going to be looking at essentially a full-time department. Maybe we can do that over five years. It might take 10 years, but it's, it's going to take a little bit more time than one year. We're not going to get to being able to count to 20 full-time firefighter, paramedics in probably anything less than 10 years.
But from a regionalization perspective, like, that type of collaboration, I haven't been involved in any type of it, but like, how long is that going to take to get off the ground?
Oh.
I think you got to give it six months.
To come, come up with a plan.
Yeah.
So, implementation, plan?
A year or more. Say, six months is pretty aggressive.
But I, I think you got to give it a chance, too.
Oh, totally, yeah.
You know, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, and the thing that frustrates me so much is that here we are, having the conversation about when that debt comes on board.
Yeah.
School debt.
Yeah.
And you take that turf field off the, off the table, and you have the money, it, we are reactionary.
Totally. But I'm trying to have a, I'm trying to have a strategic conversation about the runway, right, for us? Like, what do we need?
Then that's why we need to have the conversation with the school and say, look, you know, you need to tighten your belts, you need to, you know, you just can't spend money willy-nilly.
Mm-hmm.
Something's got to give, because it's got to be, there has to, there has to be consideration. It has to be at least consideration given.
So, but I guess, I'm thinking, so, based on the spreadsheet we have, it looks like we have a net increase in expenses of about $268,000, right? So, if we realistically, like, even hypothetically, said we wanted to add two firefighters, that's an additional 200K, right? So, we're effectively doubling, going from a 4.2% increase to an 8.8% increase.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, it's a discussion to be had, but then we're effectively higher than what the school's increase is, which everybody was just complaining.
Unless we found cuts.
Unless we found offsetting cuts, but where those are, I mean, I've got mine highlighted here, which I have questions about, but it seems like we've taken two, three rounds? I don't know how many rounds you've had with department heads. Five rounds with department heads? Because I'm, I mean, I'm seeing the fire department with no additional staff, their budget's still went up $100,000, right?
I think another way to look at that, Mark, is that if you look at a percent of spending, it's a very small percent of spending. Yes, when you look at adding $200,000 to, to our increase, it looks like a big number.
Can I?
But if you put it in perspective...
Sure.
It, it looks much different.
Really quick about the turf field, and this is all I'm going to say about it. I think it's easy to look at it and say, this is a big line item, right? Like, you know? But I also think, in reality, there's revenue that can be had from a turf field, that can offset the expenditures. You know, in some brief discussions that I've had with my partner, who is in the school system, and a lot of my family members, a lot of those schools lease out the time, probably the same way that we're paying for time on other people's fields. So, I think there's revenue offsets that can justify the spend. I don't know the, if that's what they're planning, but it would be a good question to ask them. And I don't know that targeting that is necessarily, but I agree with what you're saying.
I, I just use as an example, you know, if we wanted to drill down into the school budget, we could come up with a dozen items that, that I think they're looking at, but again...
There's 10 million other dollars in the school budget beyond the school and the turf field that are in two categories, administrative costs and reserve, and fees and services. So, there's 6 million in administrative costs and reserves, and there's almost 4 million in fees and services. So, it's not, like you said, the turf is a distraction to tightening...
There's other, there's other areas.
Tightening the belt.
But one of the, it's not just about the, the people. It's also about the way we purchase equipment. It's also being more strategic about the types of equipment we purchase. And do we all need this truck, or that truck, or what are there?
Yeah.
And those are the things that, when... And those are the things that, when Bob and I met over there, those were probably the, what I'll call the low-hanging fruit. I think you heard the deputy chief talk about here, how do we, and Ron, you helped us with this, and we, we haven't really gotten off the ground, but I think you're gonna see it in the near future, is the chassis. And how do we keep the boxes for, you know, why are we trading them in every six years when they're stainless steel? And that's not a difficult thing, from what I understand, and I may be wrong.
Very simple.
It's pretty simple, and that's something that almost we could, you know, do maybe with some outside help. So, they were talking about those things as well, so I think it's all on the table, and incrementally, maybe that savings now can go toward a new, you know, paramedic firefighter. Instead of just throwing money at it, how can we save money, and how can we move budget from the capital budget back over to the operating budget, so that, you know, now we can catch a position? Eventually, we're, we're going to get to a place where we're just gonna have to recognize we have to work with our neighbors to get this done effectively. It's just not gonna happen by ourselves.
Yeah.
I believe we have a question from the auditor.
I just wanted to add, a few years ago, when this young lady by the name of Pelosi or something like that, I would blow it up, caused the town to have considerable strife with fear of losing income. So the three towns, Cumberland, Falmouth, I think even Freyport was in, in there in Yonah, got together, and came up with a plan where we could mitigate all of this stuff that you're talking about by combining and regionalization. And, and that's still, to me, is a, a good place to explore, just like you're talking with Falmouth right now. It, it's simple. I mean, you, I can look at this all night long and throw you all kinds of things. Let's get rid of the fire department, and take the money that we, we charge for the fire department, and pay for the houses that burned down, maybe one a year, and we'll be ahead. Can't stay alive that way, so we put a little bit of residual into rescue. But I mean, that's a weird way to look at it. But I think we have to look at ways of taking the resources we have and spreading them out so that it services everybody. Every one of us can go out and find somebody to hire if we can pay enough, but that, that just goes to the next one, passes them on. I think it's a great thing that they're talking to Falmouth and trying to find something here. And you guys, you know, we literally said not Yonah, no, because they don't do this. Well, we had this plan all put in place, the fire department, the police department, and the public works department, it was gonna save us a bunch of money. And then the, the situation, Augusta squared away, and it all went away, 'cause nobody wanted to work together. I think the future is going to be working together with other towns.
Totally.
Can you tell me what percentage of our fire department is fighting fires versus EMT-related services?
Eighty-five, ninety percent, rescue.
Right.
Right. Yeah. Uh, one thing, Mark, I forgot, you asked me, um, about Falmouth and what they're doing. They went to automated trash pickup. They are still charging bags, for, for bags. They have not given up their bag program. I, I think our budget basically reflects that the bag program is ending in January, and we haven't made a formal commitment to that. I would probably say, since we are losing, since we're losing the, um, bulky item pickup, a- as well as, uh, you know, going to these carts, that, um, I think I would, I would caution you, not to, I would caution you on the bags, going after December thirty-first, I think, um, I don't know, we would have to do some type of enforcement to make sure that they were out there.
That's what I was wondering, too. Why would anybody buy them?
Yeah, well, the random enforcement, when your trash can stays at the side of the road, and, but then it comes up here at the town hall usually, and people say, what do you want me to do with this? So, I would, I would just, I, I don't think it's, uh, a long, long-term solution to, to stick with that. I think it's a short term. And with, as Bill described, one of the things I will caution you, people at home, the only thing they complain about is when people ask from the audience, they never hear the question.
Right.
Uh, Bill was talking about Poleski, and, uh, basically, it was like the Proposition thirteen in California, where they capped the tax rate, and people had to figure out, but instead of the tax rate, a lot of fees came on board. So I, I just, I, there's, there's always a balance, and I think you have to figure what, figure out what that is. I don't think it is going it alone, I really don't. In every, in every municipal service, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get bigger as departments to do it more efficiently and more effectively, and people's expectations are gonna have to come down with that a little bit as well.
Questions on the budget?
I think the budget as presented is, is very modest. You know, when you look at the, the impact to the taxpayer, uh, is two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. That's, that's, that's not a lot of money.
And I realize we don't have a direct line item, it's more of the aggregate, we talk about that kind of a lot, the charter, right? But can we talk about insurance again? I know Bob, Bob loves this topic, but why we went up thirty-five percent again? Can you just remind me? It's been a few weeks. 'Cause I'm, I've, I've got basically like four or five buckets on the bu...
We'll be here all night.
Well, I've got four or five buckets budgeted, like, highlighted as to why they were over fifty thousand dollars in increases, and this struck me as just a huge one. And I remember there was issues in the past with a, maybe a work comp injury, and that kind of trailed over, and it was a three-year rolling average. Is that now off, or Rolodex or whatever?
You, you brought it over here, you want me to answer? The, um, workers' comp, uh, the injuries that are on there right now that have increased ours substantially, will be coming off next year. We're also, uh, we've met with them, we're gonna be enrolling in, um, kind of like a safety program, and we're already doing pretty much everything there, and, um, we should be able to see, starting January first, a five percent savings from that, and then it can go up to ten percent savings on our workers' comp. Um, as long as we do, it's like, three tiers, so it's five percent, seven percent, ten percent. So if we get to ten, we have to do all these things, but we are actually in a pretty good position to be doing those. There's a few things we're missing, but, um, we're working, and, uh, the gentleman we met with from workers' comp is very enthusiastic and really helpful, and I think it's gonna be really beneficial for all around, so.
So, in other words, do we think that that thirty-five percent increase will kind of dwindle down slightly over to five percent?
We won't see it next year, we will see it next, the FY twenty-six, we'll see it.
Okay.
It should come down about, I'm hoping, thirty.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
How long does the experience last on workers' comp or health insurance?
Three years.
Three years?
Yeah.
And the same on health insurance?
Because we are such a small group, um, we're only getting about a fifteen percent credit toward that experience, but our rates only went up two percent. Now, you say only, but i- it's pretty significant when you're paying close to a million dollars, you know? So two percent is a lot of money.
Thanks, Bill.
So people are doing a good job, but, you know, we're, we're part of a bigger group, too.
Back, back to the insurance, just for a second, 'cause I, my wife will beat me up when I get home. She said there's only three to four markets out there for municipal insurance, and one of the things that she suggested that we do, and I think I missed this to Bill, is, is that we should go out to bid for a new broker, not necessarily a new carrier, uh, but looking for a broker that is more inclined to service our account. Uh, I, it's, it's, it's a convoluted explanation, and I don't profess to be a, a experienced in insurance, but that was how my wife explained it to me, so.
Yep.
I, I think that there is, going forward, we can, we can manage it better.
Well, so one of, the, the reason I have an issue with it is because we're talking about, we're reactionary towards the school, or towards what they're doing with their budget. Our budget is going potentially up two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. Fifty-eight percent of that increase is our increase in insurance. Almost sixty percent of our budget increase is just because of an insurance premium increase.
Right.
I mean, that's, it's really frustrating.
Well, yeah, I think a lot of towns also have, uh, have a lot of experience within the town, that they do have, uh, an insurance subcommittee that reports back to the finance committee, and just specializes on that one area. Insurance is a tricky one, because it's, it's workers' comp, uh, property casualty, and also, we're also looking at the HR piece that we're adding to the budget this year, uh, and part of that is in, I think we have it in insurance.
Is baked into that?
I also just wanna comment on historical part of this, which is, if, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that in FY twenty-three, the budgeted amount was three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, and your actuals were five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. So your increase to budget is what you're looking at, but your actuals are, were much higher. So I think this budget reflects something that's much more realistic in terms of what's being actually expended from this budget. So I just wanna keep that in mind, too, that even though, yeah, it's going up in the seventy, but we're, but if you spend five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand one year, now your budget's six-oh-five, is it really, that's not much of an increase? No, we're actually bringing it to more realistic numbers, and twenty-five thousand dollars of that is that main sick time as well. So bring that down again.
Oh, right, I remember you talking about that.
So bring that down again, and you're down at, what, fifty thousand dollars? You know, so it's really kind of just bringing, um, actuals, the budget back to actuals.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair point, but I think to Bob's point, I think a lot of us are feeling like it's difficult to even make the investments in what we believe we all need on the municipal side. I don't think that there's a single one of us up here who is not gonna listen to the police department and say, you need people, or the fire department, you need people, we wanna support you, right? You tell us what you need, and we wanna support you. That said, we all feel like we're kind of throwing punches underwater, and with one arm tied behind our back to be able to fight those things. And so it's just a little frustrating.
Well, Mark, but it's been a while since we've gone out to bid for insurances, uh, we, we haven't gone out to bid for a lot of the professional services, audit services, all of those have been here when I got here. So, it's been two decades, it's probably not bad, a bad time to take a look at that, and, uh, you know...
Maybe Matt, that's something Matt can take on as part of coming in, I'm, I mean, he's the one, I'm guessing, that's engaging those.
Yeah, he has the same issues in Cape, so I mean, I, I don't see if this is gonna be anything different, and Katie and Chris and Matt will work together on that, and, you know, we can, I think Bob's described it accurately. There are, there are only a few groups that will insure us, but let's pull it out there and see what we get. I mean, nothing ventured, nothing gained, so I, I have no problem with that, it just may not happen until, um, you know, the next, the next cycle.
So, to, to maintain fairness here, we did let Mr. Stiles speak, so I'll guess a couple minutes to each of you, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
Municipal insurance, no idea about it, but...
You might wanna use the microphone, if you don't mind, yeah, so we don't have to repeat it.
I have to say my name, Denise Thorson, Cumberland. Municipal insurance, do you have to use a broker, or is it something that towns can do direct with the insurance company? I understand it's probably difficult to, you know, deal with all the stuff, but a broker, do you have to use one?
It's not so great.
Typically, we do, only 'cause they, they know the markets better than we as staff do, uh, but there's also Maine Municipal for property and casualty that we could look at, as well as the other markets. Uh, some of those are self-insured.
Great. Mr. Jordan?
This is a fun game. And just to, uh, reflect on that, is a lot of municipalities that are through MMA right now, are, instead of a two percent, um, for health insurance, they're experiencing, uh, ten to fifteen to twenty percent increases. So, and that's, that's fact. I mean, I, I unfortunately, Bill makes fun of me, I watch all those meetings, so, I read all that stuff. So they are looking at that, and so a two percent, they're, they, they have some stake in the game. And also with the workers' comp, it's, there's so many things involved in it now, that it's like, uh, like in a home insurance company in California, it's hard to find somebody that's gonna do it, that's gonna insure it, 'cause there's so many things, um, that have changed in the laws, by the state law, that, um, have switched it to, um, in the, to the, in favor of paying, you know, all these claims. So MMA is really the only, only one really out there, unfortunately, so.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, and I came in late, I apologize. Scott Jordan, Cumberland. Bill, can you tell me why we, again, I heard Mr. Vale stated three or four different carriers, but how come it's been a couple decades that we haven't checked other options?
It's been fairly flat until the last few years. We've had minimal increases and at times decreases. So the increases were never to the extent, um, that we were seeing the last two years. We thought it was an anomaly at first, and then we learned, um, through our agent that, or through Maine Municipal, that also the bar has been raised, especially on workers' comp. There are pieces of cancer that were never, that were never part of workers' comp before. Now, uh, all firefighters have another category here. PTSD, never, never before out there, and in the last three years, that was added. And then there was a third leg that I can't remember what was added. That all by itself almost doubled our workers' comp premium. And that was no, no cause of any claims.
Right.
It was just because everybody in the pool was now basically subject to those future claims, so, uh, their actuarial tables went through the roof, and, uh, since we're a self-insured group with MM, uh, with Maine Municipal, that's why it went up as high as it did. I mean, we were under eighty-five thousand, and now we're over two-hundred thousand, so...
So part two to that question, are there other departments or sections that we may not have checked into as well for other budgets, that may have been a couple decades that we haven't looked at other options to?
No, we were talking about the professional services, about looking at, um, looking at health insurance, looking at, uh, property and casualty insurance, uh, look at auditing, all, all of those professional services that have been here since the beginning of time, we'll, we'll start looking at closer, and, uh, looking at, uh, potential, trying to pull together RFPs that we can actually, uh, get some, uh, some tighter bids. The explanation is, is easy, since there are so few games in town, you basically allow, by, by your permission, um, all these brokers to compete against each other, and they're going to the same carrier, so it seems a little bit odd, but that's how, that's how it's done, so.
The reason I ask that is 'cause we have a broker, he's not an insurance broker, but he is a broker for multiple other, at least two or three things possibly up there, that he's reached out to the town multiple times, and nobody calls him back.
Well, 'cause he knows you, Scott, that's why, so, you know, you shouldn't tell, you shouldn't drop your name.
That's probably, that's probably one of the reasons, for sure. I love you, Bill.
Tell me you don't know. I know, I know, teasing you. No, we, uh, we are aware of a lot of these, uh, a lot of these prices, they are matching, uh, the, um, uh, prices of GP Cog, they do a ton of municipal services, and most of those, uh, most of those vendors that we do use, uh, will match or, or do better than the GP Cog pricing. So, we didn't feel paying, adjoining a lot of those bids was worth our while, why pay them the fees when we're getting the same service for a lesser price?
Are there any other questions on the budget?
One question, uh, for the insurance, so increased rate, how does it work? And this might be getting too much into the weeds, but for example, the company I work for, every year when we do our benefits review, like, employees have to pay an extra dollar